Okay, um, good evening, everyone. Um, welcome to the Mountain View City Council Special Meeting of August 26, 2025. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Okay, um, good evening, everyone. Um, welcome to the Mountain View City Council Special Meeting of August 26, 2025. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Okay, um, good evening, everyone. Um, welcome to the Mountain View City Council Special Meeting of August 26, 2025. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Okay, um, good evening, everyone. Um, welcome to the Mountain View City Council Special Meeting of August 26, 2025. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Okay, um, good evening, everyone. Um, welcome to the Mountain View City Council Special Meeting of August 26, 2025. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Okay, um, good evening, everyone. Um, welcome to the Mountain View City Council Special Meeting of August 26, 2025. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Okay, um, good evening, everyone. Um, welcome to the Mountain View City Council Special Meeting of August 26, 2025. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Okay, um, good evening, everyone. Um, welcome to the Mountain View City Council Special Meeting of August 26, 2025. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Okay, um, good evening, everyone. Um, welcome to the Mountain View City Council Special Meeting of August 26, 2025. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Hi, um, good evening, everyone. Um, welcome to the Mountain View City Council Special Meeting of August 26, 2025. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Hi, um, good evening, everyone. Um, welcome to the Mountain View City Council Special Meeting of August 26, 2025. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, I think we can try to reconvene. Hopefully, the technical issues are resolved. So we can move on to item three, which is roll call. The city clerk will take attendance by roll call.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Hicks?
Here.
Councilmember McAllister?
Yep.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Here.
Councilmember Showalter?
Here.
Vice Mayor Ramos?
Here.
Mayor Kame?
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Great, thank you very much. So we'll move on to item four, which is our public hearing. Item 4.1 is about our 2025 Building Codes Update. Assistant Community Development Director Lindsay Hagan and Chief Building Official Nina Bizjack, did I say that right? Okay, will present the item. If you'd like to speak on this item in person, please submit a blue speaker card to the city clerk now. We'll start with the staff presentation.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Lindsay Hagan, Assistant Community Development Director, and I'm joined tonight by Nina Bizjack, the Chief Building Official, to present the 2025 Building Codes Update. Um, starting with some of the background on the building codes, the formal name of the codes that we're primarily talking about tonight are the Building, California Building Standards Code, uh, which is adopted as part of the California Code of Regulations or Title 24. Um, this code regulates various aspects of all building occupancies in California, including things like construction, sustainability, life safety, as well as other provisions. It's overseen by the California Building Standards Commission, or CBSC for short, and it's updated every three years to incorporate new technologies, latest advancements, lessons learned, and enhanced safety. Um, all cities in California are responsible for enforcing this code, um, and local amendments to this code by cities is allowed, um, but they must be accepted by the CBSC and are restricted to really two areas. Uh, one is administrative or procedural in nature. Um, local amendments can also be more stringent than state code provisions, um, but local cities have to adopt findings due to local climatic, geological, or topographical conditions. Um, staff has incorporated those findings in Attachment Four to the staff report. Um, talking a little bit more about the California Building Standards Code, um, this code is often just referred to as the state code. Um, it's comprised of 13 parts. Each one of these parts listed on your screen is really in and of itself individual codes. So really, this code is a pretty substantial code. Um, I do want to highlight a couple of the particular parts. Um, Part Seven, which is highlighted on here, is a new, um, code that was brought into this 2025 cycle. It's the California Wildland Urban Interface Code. It's in response to a lot of the wildfires that California has seen in the last couple of years and requires certain building, um, requirements and materials to be used in fire-prone areas of California. Um, Mountain View is not located in any of the areas where this code is applicable. Um, additionally, uh, we want to highlight Part 11, the California Green Building Standards Code, or CalGreen. This is a code, uh, in chapter, or part, I should say, that, um, our REACH code provisions are all located in this part. Um, and then lastly, just highlighting Part Six, which is the California Energy Code. This is where a lot of the energy efficiency provisions, um, lie, and when cities modify this code, it does require additional approval from a state agency. Um, getting into one of those agencies and approval process, um, we did want to talk about cost-effectiveness studies. So this is required when a local amendment related to energy efficiency or conservation standards either are proposed in Part Six, the Energy Code I just mentioned, or in any of the other parts of the, the California State Code. Um, and if an amendment is made, it does require the adoption of local findings by the city as well as the California Energy Commission does have to approve these amendments, and that process can take anywhere from two to four months. Um, the study must evaluate how many years it takes to recoup the initial cost of the requirement compared to the ongoing operational outcome. Um, so multiple cities can use the same cost-effectiveness study, um, as long as the local amendments are, uh, in line with the study. And the study must demonstrate at least one cost-effective path to comply. So, uh, important point to that is it doesn't mean all aspects of the provision have to be cost-effective. Um, just at least one. Um, staff has included a cost-effectiveness study for one of the new 2025 REACH code provisions, the AC-to-heat pump, which we'll talk about in a moment. Um, this was prepared by the California Energy Codes and Standards statewide utility program. Uh, the study complies with the requirements of the California Energy Commission for consideration of their approval, and staff has included the necessary findings in Attachment Four, um, which also is where the study is located. Um, it's also an example of an amendment that's not in Part Six but related to energy efficiency. That particular provision is actually part of Part 11, the CalGreen code. So in addition to some of the nuts and bolts, um, of the code, uh, it's important to talk about the current regulatory environment that we are in in relation to these, uh, the 2025 code cycle. Uh, in particular, there are three major actions in the last two years that have fed into why staff is proposing the package of amendments we are, including REACH code provisions for 2025 at this time. The first is in 2023, the Bay Area Air Quality Management District adopted rulings that established a sale prohibition on nitrogen oxide emitting water heaters and furnaces by 2027 and 2029 respectively. Um, to be clear, there are no current gas appliances on the market that meet a zero NOx emission. So, um, effectively, it's anticipated that this is really going to shift the market availability of gas-powered water heaters and furnaces in the near term. So that is why staff has started to introduce electric pre-wiring requirements in anticipation of these appliances going electric in the near term. In 2024, um, the outcome of the California Restaurant Association and City of Berkeley lawsuit, um, came, uh, which resulted in Mountain View having to suspend our all-electric requirements related to gas appliances, as well as other cities in our region took the same action. In its place, we adopted new electric pre-wiring requirements for new construction for all development types, which we referred to as Phase One, which was adopted in 2024. Um, and so now, as part of the package before you tonight, we are proposing a Phase Two to that pre-wiring requirement as a continuation of these efforts. Um, and lastly, in 2025, this year, we have Assembly Bill 306 and AB 130, um, which came to fruition. Uh, AB 306 is a reaction from the Southern California wildfires and the rebuilding efforts around them. Um, essentially, AB 130, which was signed into law on June 30th, um, of this year, effectuated AB 306, um, immediately. And essentially, it prohibits amendments by the California Building Standards Codes or cities to the state code for six years that impact residential development, um, unless the amendments meet certain, um, exceptions, a handful of them, which are listed here on your screen. Um, so these exceptions relate to previously adopted city amendments in place by September 30th of this year. Um, they're related, amendments related to emergency standards or home hardening. Home hardening is essentially fireproofing or fire prevention measures, um, in a home. Uh, amendments that are necessary to implement a city's adopted general plan and as part of a, a city adopted greenhouse gas reduction strategy while still allowing mixed-fueled residential construction. And lastly, administrative enhancements, um, related to processing permits. So things like reducing review timelines or adopting fee schedules, you can make amendments related to those matters. Um, so AB 130 is really the reason that city staff significantly accelerated the preparation of the 2025 Building Code Update. Uh, we calculated it was actually seven weeks from today we received the code. So it was roughly six weeks for us to get here today. Um, we are attempting with council's approval, of course, to introduce new code provisions and submit them to, um, and receive acceptance by the California Building Standards Commission prior to the September 30th due date um, to give ourselves the greatest chance of success in adopting, uh, new local amendments to our code, including new REACH code provisions. So any delay in adopting code provisions at today's hearing and the tentatively scheduled reading on September 9th will lower the city's chances of receiving, um, the necessary approval to incorporate new code provisions for implementation by January 1st of 2026 and possibly for six years. So shifting gears into the preparation of our 2025 code updates, um, and sort of how we update the building code in general. Uh, first and foremost, it takes a village, really, to do this work. Regionally, we coordinate and participate in various groups, um, primarily one being Silicon Valley Clean Energy Every Code Cycle, who helps, um, this region with REACH code provisions. Uh, we also coordinate with other professional organizations, technical code experts, and of course, consult other cities. Uh, from the city side, it really truly is a collaborative effort, um, as there are many parts to the state code, as you saw, and it requires us to really divvy up the work based on areas of specialty. So, um, as you can see from the list on your screen here, we really coordinate from, with staff from the fire department, like the fire marshal and hazardous material staff, from public works like land development and public services. Um, we also coordinate, of course, with many public, uh, building staff, including plan checkers, fire protection engineers, inspectors, um, the city attorney's office, uh, as well as the sustainability division and the city manager's office. And I'll say even this year, we consulted with the police department on one section as well. So I really, uh, just want to take a second to thank the team enough, you know, for all their work this, um, last couple of weeks on all this effort. Um, in terms of, uh, sort of getting into the particulars of what we look at when we're doing this work every three years, can really be put into three buckets. Uh, first, we remove code provisions that are no longer relevant. So usually, these are provisions that the new state code has gotten more stringent and has absorbed that requirement. Um, and a great example of that would be some of the 2024 pre-wiring requirements we adopted for multifamily residential and commercial kitchens have now become part of the base code. So those are no longer local amendments. Um, the other rationale for removing, uh, code provisions would be if there's been a change in how a standard is calculated or defined or applied. Uh, so it may make our local amendment moot. Um, kind of shifting to the second bucket, we, uh, update and adjust the code provisions to meet minimum 2025 state code provisions in this case. We look at the new provisions and see if we need to add any new local amendments. Uh, we have to align a lot of the references to the correct code sections because a lot of times those code sections do move around. Um, and then we also reorganize or clarify some of our current code requirements. A great example of this is our mandatory green building table, which is located in, um, part, uh, Attachment Four. This is actually a table that outlines all of our REACH code provisions. It's been a very popular and well-utilized table, and so we really tried to enhance it this cycle. Um, additionally, adding any necessary administrative procedures or references. Um, and then lastly, it's of course reviewing our REACH code provisions, um, making sure to carry over any provisions that are still exceeding the new code cycle, uh, minimums, and then as well as look at any new, uh, REACH code provisions. Um, so sort of getting into what is a REACH code? Um, REACH codes are local building code amendments that go beyond the minimum requirements of the state building code to meet a community's environmental and sustainability goals. So this can really range from, um, promoting clean energy, expanding, you know, electric vehicle charging infrastructure, reducing waste, um, or water, um, or pursuing other environmental objectives. For this year, an example of that would be some of the bird-friendly design standards. Um, why the city, uh, looks to adopt REACH codes? Um, a great sort of starting point is in April of 2020, the council adopted a resolution to become a carbon-neutral city by 2045. Um, and so as part of our work in greenhouse gas emissions, um, the city does intermittently undertake an inventory. So the table or the graph shown on your screen here is from the 2023 inventory of our greenhouse gas emissions. And as you can see from the, the chart, um, buildings contribute to about 32% of Mountain View's greenhouse gas emissions. And the majority of that at 22% is related to gas, um, appliances and equipment that are in those buildings. So an important aspect of REACH codes is really as a tool to help facilitate electric upgrades aimed at reducing greenhouse gas emissions in buildings in the most cost-effective way. Um, moving on to the actual, uh, you know, proposed new 2025 REACH code provisions, um, I, we've sort of grouped them here for simplicity of those that are applicable for single-family and duplex, duplexes versus those that are applicable to all development. Uh, for single-family and duplexes, we have AC-to-heat pump requirements. Um, we have the Phase Two electric readiness requirements or pre-wiring requirements. Uh, we have a zoning incentive, which I will not discuss in this present, presentation further, and they are not actually included in the 2025 Building Code Updates, but it's something that staff is pursuing and happy to answer any questions later. Um, and then for all development, uh, is the electric pre-wiring requirements for Phase Two as well as bird-friendly design. So getting more into the particulars of each of these provisions. Um, the AC-to-heat pump provision is related to single-family residential only. Um, it is triggered when you're replacing or adding space cooling equipment, and in those cases, you have sort of two paths. You can either install a heat pump space conditioner, which is essentially, uh, heat pump system that can do cooling and heating uh, and simply comply with the state code minimum requirements, or, um, install an AC unit, which will only just do cooling, uh, with your gas furnace and do other energy improvements above the state code minimums, things like greater attic insulation or air sealing of ducts. Um, so some of the background on this provision, um, it's again really in support of BACMed's recent ruling on the prohibition of nitrogen oxide-producing furnace, furnace sales by 2029. Um, there are already existing, um, or there are already included in the 2025 Energy Code, non-residential component to heat pump requirements. Um, and so this is a voluntary measure, this provision, that is included in the 2025 CalGreen. Um, and so this is what staff is proposing to adopt. Um, this is the requirement, um, that requires a cost-effectiveness study and approval by the California Energy Commission. Um, there are other couple of, other cities that either already have this provision in place, like the cities of, uh, Portola Valley and San Mateo. And then San Jose and Sunnyvale are currently pursuing them as part of this current cycle. Moving on to electric readiness or pre-wiring requirements. So this, uh, applies to all existing buildings where additions or alterations are proposed that require, um, a building permit and a gas or propane appliance is proposed to be installed. Um, so it applies to all indoor/outdoor natural gas or propane appliances for single-family, multifamily, hotels, motels, and non-residential development. Um, this requirement, uh, would require the installation of a circuit wire, um, to meet the minimum voltage that's necessary for an electric version of the gas or propane appliance proposed to be installed, but no less than 120 volt. Um, it requires infrastructure to be installed from the panel to within three feet of the appliance. Um, it requires the labeling, um, of these, uh, the circuit as well as the, um, the panel and the line, uh, and it would require applicants to include, um, location and dimension of that future electric appliance on building plans. Um, so these provisions are very similar to our existing pre-wiring requirements. The only additional factor is just, um, that it applies to existing buildings and additions and alterations. Um, some of the background here, um, this provision is proposed in lieu of Silicon Valley Clean Energy's identified 2025 pre-wiring REACH requirement. So that REACH code provision applies only to single-family. This applies to all development. Um, and to be clear, this does not require someone to change the use of a gas appliance. They can still have the appliance, but rather, it prepares the property owner for the future of, uh, of a future electric appliance. And the thought being as well that installing this infrastructure at the time that other renovations are occurring is really the most cost-effective way to install that electrical infrastructure. And the last, uh, provision that we'll talk about is the bird-safe design requirements. Um, so this is a new set of bird-safe design standards, um, that are in an optional appendix in the state code for multifamily residential, um, development, hotels, motels, and non-residential development for new construction and major renovations. And really, these provisions, uh, provisions include requirements around specific glazing requirements and other visible barrier requirements. Um, it identifies certain architectural design features that, uh, require the application of the building, uh, the bird-friendly glazing, um, things like glass railings or passageways. Uh, requires time-controlled lighting for exterior lighting or interior lighting that's visible from the exterior, um, to be fully turned off from 2:00 AM to dawn. Um, it also has a recommendation about, um, encouraging janitorial services to occur from sunrise to sunset. And, uh, in terms of the thresholds that are proposed for this provision- And in terms of the thresholds that are proposed for this provision, it's new construction of a structure of 10,000 square feet or greater in size, so this aligns with our current 2022 reach code provision. And then the two that we're expanding into or proposing to expand into are for existing buildings of 10,000 square feet or greater in size, that is replacing or adding 50% or more glazing on the exterior, as well as for multifamily residential, applying both A and B standards if the zoning requires bird-safe design. So really introducing this or adopting this appendix is a way to add greater clarity to our existing requirements from the 2022 reach code, as well as complement existing zoning requirements where bird-safe design is already required for multifamily residential and non-residential, which would be in our North Bay Shore and East Wisman Precise Plan In addition to all of the standard local amendments and reach code provisions that we've been discussing, staff also took this opportunity to do other code cleanups, so we wanted to briefly highlight those. We, as part of this package, have proposed to relocate all of the existing floodplain management regulations from Chapter Eight, which is where our building code lives, to a new Chapter Forty-Eight, and that is included in Attachment One. This allows it to be a lot more accessible to the public and easier to find. And then adopt new 2024 International Property Maintenance Code and relocate that from Chapter Eight, which is the building code, to Chapter Twenty-Five, our neighborhood preservation chapter. And this really is an area where other similar provisions are located, and so makes sense from an operational standpoint, and those are included in Attachment Two. There's cleanup and removal of toxic gas provisions in Chapter Twenty-Four, which is our hazardous materials section of our city code, and that's included in Chapter Three. The toxic gas provisions are largely in other state and federal regulations, so they don't necessarily have to be in our local code. And last but not least, general cleanup to Chapter Eight to remove outdated or unenforceable sections of the code and reorganize the content, which is also included in Attachment Four. One last plug before we close out the presentation is, since I have this platform, I want to talk about some of the rebates and credits that are available for a lot of these electric readiness and other initiatives. Some of these are related to our reach code provisions, some of them are not. But in general, what's on your screen here, Silicon Valley Clean Energy has numerous rebates available for Mountain View residents, related to heat pump water heaters, HVAC, induction cooktops, and other electrical upgrades, including panel upgrades. The city also has a rebate program, limited time availability for heat pump water heaters, and essentially, we're teaming up with Silicon Valley Clean Energy on those. There's also electric vehicle rebates available through various parties, as well as TechClean California rebates available for heat pump HVACs and water heaters, as well as tax credits for building electrification projects. So there's really various opportunities for residents to try and receive money to go towards these improvements. So with that, staff will conclude our presentation. We do recommend that staff, that council consider adoption of the four ordinances that we have attached to the staff report. These ordinances do include local amendments, and so do include the local findings that have to be made, as well as include the cost-effectiveness study that was previously mentioned. On that note, that concludes staff's presentation. We do have various other staff and team members available for questions that I do want to mention. We do have Danielle Lee, our Chief Sustainability and Resiliency Officer, available. Carrie Sandall, our Fire Marshal, is also available. Farhad Farman from TRC Companies for any technical questions, as well as Naper Haremath from Silicon Valley Clean Energy. So with that, concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Great, thanks so much. So we'll move on to council questions. Does any member of the council have questions for staff? Councilmember Hicks.
So I'm familiar with the electrification aspects of this, of the proposal, you know, from sitting on the council's sustainability committee and comfortable with them. We've gotten a letter from various environmental groups asking us to tweak some of the bird-safe design, and I'm hoping we can do that, but I'm wondering, I don't want it to slow down the process at all, so I'd just like, I mean, I see in council questions, staff has been asked some questions on that subject, but I'm wondering just specifically, is, you know, is that something that we can do?
Yes, thanks for the question, councilmember. In terms of making additional tweaks and amendments, that is all possible and part of the purview of council tonight. It's at this council's discretion to make those amendments, and specifically in relation to the bird-friendly design. I believe we received a letter from a couple different groups about the suggested edits to, or further amendments, I should say, to the bird-friendly design. Reviewing the letter, they're related to removing filming requirements on glazing, removing netting requirements, and, oh, making adjustments to the glass passageways, sort of trigger when that comes required, as well as adding some additional special conditions under sort of scenarios, architectural design details where bird-friendly glazing would be triggered. So sort of looking over this letter, there is nothing of major concern from staff's side in terms of being able to incorporate these. And just to be clear, what would happen here is if the majority of council does want to make this amendment, staff would incorporate it into the second reading ordinance that we would bring forth, which is planned for September 9th. So that would be another opportunity for council to kind of verify that staff has addressed it accordingly.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for doing not only the electrification stuff so quickly, but also responding to the bird-safe design even more quickly.
Great, thank you very much. And then we'll go to the next questions, but I just, for a quick process question related to councilmember Hicks' question, City Attorney Logue, so if we were to make those amendments, could that be part of the motion? Or would we need to take a straw poll on that? Just wanted to, so that I can, for my tracking purposes.
It should be part of the motion.
Great, thank you. Okay. Okay, colleagues, so if we're interested, then the motion maker can include that. Councilmember Clark, no, Councilmember Cho Walter, was that you, or was it?
You know, Allison asked the questions I was going to ask, so I withdrew my name.
Oh, okay, perfect. Okay, I thought I saw something. Councilmember Clark.
Just one question, because we had the, I don't think the bird-safe requirements were, came up at the sustainability committee meeting, they're kind of new. And so I'm referencing that back to the Cal Green sort of summary of the voluntary provisions that can be adopted that are summarized. And I just wanted to clarify a couple things. So in the, in Cal Green, it says the, you can use a time-switch control device or an occupancy sensor, but in the staff presentation, it only says time-controlled lighting. So I'm wondering if, I assume you can also use occupancy sensors if you have people there after a certain hour?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So I'll just have two parts to the response. To answer your question simply, yes, I apologize, it might have been an oversimplification in my presentation, but it would be whatever's written in that Appendix A5 would be applicable, so the occupancy sensors would be fine. And then the second part, which I realize wasn't part of your question, but I will just acknowledge, so the bird-friendly design standards, we were not aware of at the time of the CSC meeting, because we hadn't received the published 2025 state code, so we didn't know that that was an optional appendix. So that's, it came to us, we saw it, we saw the opportunity, and staff took the chance of proposing it tonight.
That makes sense. And then the second part is related to that. I was just trying to dig in and figure out the, the appendix says the control devices shall be programmed so the lights are extinguished from 2:00 a.m. to dawn, with an exception for emergency lighting and lighting required for nighttime security. But I assume if you have a group that's working there, you know, with some team halfway across the world who just works in the middle of the night, that the occupancy sensors are override, that this isn't like a thou shalt have, thou shalt work in darkness at 3:00 in the morning if you happen to be there working?
Yeah, it's a fair question, councilmember. Yeah, no, so it's definitely not intended to be absolutely prohibitive. Some of this, I think you do have to take a little bit of a reasonable test, too, in terms of how a building's occupied. Additionally, it does have the exception in here about life safety, so there are certain lighting you absolutely have to have in terms of fire exiting when a building's occupied. So there's definitely lighting that would still occur. I think a lot of this is about trying to encourage and then...
Yeah. Yeah, I saw some of our interviews, it was just, this is one of those things where, you know, if you're looking for to lease a commercial space and you can't really use it for a few hours, also because daylight changes throughout the year, right? So I get the intent, the intent I agree with, I think, as long as it isn't, as long as we don't, yeah, anyway, thank you.
Councilmember McAllister?
Yeah, thank you. All this reach code took place after I left the council, so I'm trying to get up to speed on this thing, and it seems to elude me a little bit here. But I'm more interested in some of the requirements for electrical appliances that were told. I keep hearing the word voluntary, but then I hear you need to do this or do that. And then I noticed on here, it says, you made the comment about new construction, people are supposed to do things, or new construction or requires a building permit. So if somebody was to replace their water heater, are they required to have a building
Thank you, councilmember. Yes, you are required to have a permit. We have to ensure that you've installed it per the manufacturer's specifications, and also verify that it is a listed product for California, as well as any connection points for electricity or exhaust or electrification.
So I want to just replace my water heater. So everything that you just said, how much would that cost? Let's say the water heater costs $500. What other costs are associated with what you just required, or is being required in the potential new reach codes?
So councilmember, in terms of your question about water heaters, so these are some cost estimates that Silicon Valley Clean Energy shared with us based on the local service territory. So these are some average costs to replace your gas-to-heat pump water heaters, about $7,000. To replace a gas-to-gas water heater is about $2,000 to $3,000. Part of the rationale between, about pursuing heat pump equipment is about the long-term savings in operations and monthly payments for utilities, which is proven to be more cost-effective with a heat pump water heater than a gas-powered one. In terms of other costs related, obviously, there will be some minimal permitting costs, and it does depend on if you need other improvements as part of your upgrade. So in some cases, somebody may need an electrical outlet or something installed, and so that would be some additional minimal work to be done, but this price tag is the average that they've seen.
So does this price tag include where you were talking about, you know, you said voluntary, if they want to go to gas is a voluntary decision, and therefore, they can, if they want to go to gas-to-gas versus the heat pump, they may have to increase their attic installation, they might have to do dual pane windows. Is that what, is that covered under what you were talking about in this instance?
Yeah, so I think another slide I'll show you here, this is actually pulled from the cost-effectiveness study for the AC to heat pump, so that was included in the staff report. I will, in the meantime, ask Farhad from TRC Companies to get promoted in the meantime, while I just respond generally. So this kind of snapshot provides the overall cost comparison between heaping your AC and having a gas furnace and replacing them versus having the heat pump component, so over that time span. Farhad, do you mind responding more specifically?
Yeah, happy to. So good evening, honorable counsel. My name is Farhad Farman with TRC, Technical Consultant to Silicon Valley Clean Energy, and happy to provide some support here tonight. I think there's two questions that are being asked. One is with a heat pump, with a water heater replacement that requires a permit, what is that additional cost for the electric readiness? And what staff's providing here is kind of a host of options available. One is you either provide 120-volt circuit, and that's, that's going to be typical for all water heaters, unless you have a water heater that's the old type that runs on a pilot light. So if you have that situation, you're going to be looking at a $500 to $800 additional costs around that 120-volt circuit. It's kind of at the high end. You can obviously run a conduit, that's going to be a similar cost, that's what you would see, but as you saw on the previous slide, a water heater replacement is, you know, I think the councilmember said $500, it's not that, not that inexpensive, unfortunately, even for a water heater replacement. It does cost more, so the cost of that additional infrastructure, additional infrastructure does become a smaller portion of that like-for-like replacement that you'd be doing. So that's one question I wanted to address. The second question is if you are, what's the voluntary and what's the mandatory provision? Staff described this, but I'll just reiterate, Cal Green's model code is a voluntary model. It is available for local jurisdictions to adopt as mandatory, and that's what staff is proposing tonight. So they will take that voluntary model, design for jurisdictions to adopt, and adopt it as mandatory. What this would require, this policy would require, is when you are installing an air conditioner to have, you know, a few additional efficiency measures, so that your energy equivalents to what that heat pump would have been, and the specific measures are listed here, and so that's fan efficacy, refrigerant charge verification, duct insulation, and attic insulation, as well as air sealing. It depends on if you're replacing your ductwork or not. If you are not replacing your ductwork, the added cost of those efficiency measures on top of the AC can range between $4,000 to $7,500. And that is by design, we want that energy equivalency, we also want to incentivize the heat pump adoption. This last bullet here is if you are replacing your ductwork, that could alone cost somewhere between $5,000 to $10,000. It's already a much more expensive project, and thus the, and you have more work happening, so the additional cost of the efficiency measures is relatively lower. They are still there, but it's not as high as if you were reusing your existing ductwork. I hope that answers your question. I'm available for further questions.
What about, AC is usually, some people, luxury, but just basic stove and a furnace. What kind of costs are we looking at there? Do you need a permit to change a stove?
Thank you, councilmember. If you have the existing connections already in place, then it is deemed an appliance, just that is removed and replaced. Example would be if you already have an existing 220-volt circuit, you're buying the same model that uses that same capacity, then a permit would not be required for just that swap-out of that unit. It would be required if you were going to say a larger unit, and you had only a 120-volt circuit, and you needed a 220, then you would need to get an electrical permit to make that modification to accommodate that new range.
What about going from gas to gas? Replacing an older gas stove to a different gas stove?
Thank you. It's the same kind of summary...
So there's no permit required?
No, it's not, it's only if you're going to be increasing the line size, or the manufacturer's specifications are requiring a different pipe size or flow rate, then a permit would be required.
Okay, so that item doesn't change, based on what the Supreme Court's decided? So someone could replace their stove, not have to worry about it, that would still be allowed? It's not mandatory. So let's go back to the water heater. You're replacing a water heater with a water heater, all the connections are the same, all the power's the same, so there's nothing really changing, is that you're taking one off and putting a new one on. So why does that require a permit? Because all you're doing is replacing something that already exists.
Yeah, councilmember, appreciate the question. I think as... I think as Nina highlighted before, if it's a like-for-like replacement, it doesn't require the building permit. One thing I do want to clarify is none of these provisions prohibit the use of gas appliances. The Berkeley lawsuit was very clear, the city can't prohibit it. A lot of this is, these incentives or provisions are really trying to encourage the use of electric appliances or preparing for future electric appliances because of some of the rulings that we already know about from BackMed, where you won't even be able to purchase a gas water heater or gas-powered furnace in the near term. So this is really, a lot of these provisions are about sort of preparing people for that future time.
So everything we just talked about is not required? I mean, the reach codes are, one thing you say they're required, again, they're voluntary, and you don't have to do any of that? If you, what I'm trying to get is the cost for seniors, for other people that have been in a house, that they don't have the income. And one of the fastest-growing age demographics in Mountain View is the age people are growing older, and people are staying in their houses longer. And I'm trying to understand is that, well, you have these rebates and you have this, but now, all of a sudden, I'm using a phrase called unfunded mandates, that you're requiring all these people to do, you know, additional costs just to do something simple. And I'm trying to clarify, is it really required to do all this, or is it just the city wanting people to do that versus they could still stay with the simple things and repairs and replacements?
Yeah, I appreciate the question, and I think I understand. I think maybe a different way to frame this, these code provisions come into play when a building permit's required. So typically, we don't see people come in and just want to install an electrical conduit and just pre-wire one thing. That's not a frequent permit we see. Oftentimes, these requirements get triggered when people are doing much more major renovations and remodels. And so that's really what is at the core of what is proposed in this package for 2025 is about encouraging and impacting existing buildings where those renovations are taking place. So there are examples that we've talked through where building permits are not required, in which case these code provisions would not apply. It's really just when you trigger that building permit where these requirements come into play. In terms of some of the cost concerns, I think, I think we can all agree, the cost of construction and everything has gone high. But a lot of these improvements, because they're packaged with other major work, they become kind of minuscule in the cost of things. And I think what the rebate programs and tax credits are trying to sort of help fill some of that gap for income-qualified residents, and that's why I know Silicon Valley Clean Energy, as well as Mountain View, as well as many of the state credits, also have additional funds that they will provide for income-qualifying residents. So I think that's where it would trigger potentially more of the senior demographic, where they have fixed incomes. And so I think resources are available to help with some of these costs. I think the reality is if you're coming to do some of these improvements, there's a reason, you're obviously in need of replacement or some other trigger. So I don't know that I would necessarily sort of couch it or phrase it as an unfunded mandate. It's more if you trigger these requirements, you know, these are the options you have in front of you. And I think, just to clarify, the AC to heat pump, there's a reason there's multiple paths put into that. It's because it can get complicated. Not every house is built the same. Some houses don't even have ductwork, so in terms of how their HVAC system operates. So that code provision has built in to it different sort of options for those scenarios to the best ability that we can standardize it. We've, you know, those code provisions have tried to. And I do want to just highlight, you know, worst-case scenario with the electric readiness or even the AC to heat pump, there are going to be scenarios where we do have exceptions put into the code where if, for example, the AC to heat pump or, let's say, electrical pre-wiring requirement, for some reason, triggered the need for you to upgrade your electrical panel, and that was not part of your proposed package of improvements, then there's a path for us to say, you know what, this doesn't seem appropriate for your improvement, that's not really our intent, so we would actually not require you to have to comply with that provision.
Yeah, I did read those, you had a couple exemptions in there. It was on page seven, I think, of 18 where you put in there. So, okay, so that's why I took out AC going in, because that is a major appliance in there, it's electrical and foundation, and so I left that out, and most people aren't going to be put in, they have the luxury, because even though with everything getting warmer, the luxury of having an air conditioning unit is not going to. So if I was to summarize it very simply for the person out there, if all I'm doing is replacing my water heater, or replacing my range with like-kind, none of this applies.
That is correct. Thank you, councilmember. So there would be only one exception, and the exception would be is if you currently do not meet the seismic requirements for bracing the water heater. So if your current one is not meeting those regulations, then we do make sure it is earthquake compliant. And that would be something we would be inspecting, the strapping.
Strap, okay. I think most plumbers are putting straps on. Okay. Another, a little higher topic, please bear with me, mayor, I know we have a short time. If we get to the point where we're going to be having brownouts, you know, because there is a stress on the electrical grid right now, and before, we used to have brownouts, how is, how can you justify some of these things if all of a sudden, that, okay, we're going to have brownouts, so your electrical's not working and so forth? I know up at Lake Tahoe, they have power outages all the time, so they say, let's go with gas because it's reliable. Thinking, how will we address this? Or is it too big for this topic, and I'll gladly close up and go on?
It's a great question, councilmember. I think part of this is about, well, let me back up. The 2025 code does include actually and introduces new requirements, particularly for single-family, about getting ready for battery storage systems. And there's already requirements in place to install battery storage. So I think we will see over time that with the installation of the battery storage, even if there is a blackout or brownout, people will still have power through that battery storage. So I think that's one way that, in general, the state's trying to respond to the electrical grid. And I think overall, I, sorry, I lost my train of thought. I think, I'll say, I'll just add that part of your question is bigger than the item before you tonight.
Yes.
But I think, to be fair, a lot of this in our efforts here is really trying to find other clean energy and other sources of energy for electricity, and I don't know that there's a way we can really prevent them, other than trying to deal with infrastructure improvements and expansion, which I know PG&E is doing.
One last question for Silicon Clean Energy. Why aren't there rebates for batteries? If that's where we're going, why aren't we saying, let's do that now?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Napolai Math from Silicon Valley Clean Energy. We don't currently offer rebate for batteries, you're right, but we do have some pilot programs that we have run that have installed residential customer batteries. And we are looking at a new program coming up in the, probably in the next six months or so, where we may consider rebates for batteries. It's all a part of this larger effort to make sure that the grid is sustainable, and so if we are fighting rebates for batteries, we want to make sure that those batteries are connected to the grid and are sharing power back with the grid so that you don't end up with a brownout or blackout situation. So it's this whole concept around demand flexibility, which is kind of moving power back and forth between the battery and the grid.
Okay, thank you. I'll rely on my councilmember, Cheryl Walter, to advocate for batteries. Thank you.
Great. Does any member, any other member of council have a question?
Okay, not seeing any. I just had a quick question for staff and SVC and our consultant, which is for the outreach, for the residential rebates. What has been the outreach in languages other than English, or what have we been doing to make sure? I know that the additional rebates are income-qualified, so maybe we could talk about our outreach efforts and how that's been utilized, and if there's more that we can do there. Thanks.
Yes, thank you, mayor. So I will actually ask Danielle Lee to be promoted, since it's her team that really runs the rebate program, and she may be able to shed light on that.
Good evening, councilmembers. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for the question, mayor. We have been conducting outreach for the year of the heat pump water heater through community events, and we're also developing a wide range of outreach materials in partnership with our multicultural engagement program. We'll be offering those in English, Spanish, Chinese, and Russian, I believe.
Okay, so we haven't done that outreach yet, but we're going to be doing it?
Yeah, we're developing, we've just, we've developed a whole character, a water heater character, so we're rolling it out now.
Great, thank you. And then SVC?
Hi again. So SVC does already provide multilingual outreach in four different languages. That's our default, I think, on our website. And then we're also, we've been doing a lot of rebate promotions, particularly in Spanish, and I think we're starting to do it in Vietnamese as well. So I think our latest was some TV ads and radio ads. So we are doing outreach to promote our rebate program pretty heavily in multiple languages.
Have you been seeing people start to engage?
We haven't.
That's the other part, right? Is like outreach and then make sure that.
Absolutely, yeah. And so we actually also have our rebate application form available in multiple languages. I know for sure we have it in Spanish, and we're just rolling it out in other languages, but we haven't received any applications submitted in Spanish yet. We do know that we have a lot of clicks that came into our website from Spanish emails that were sent. So we are getting some interest, but maybe, we don't know if those folks are bilingual and still ended up submitting an application in English or are waiting for some other reason.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, those are my questions. So now we'll move on to public comment on the item. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. We'll display a three-minute timer on the screen, and each speaker will have three minutes. We'll start with in-person public comment first, so I'll call your names and just ask you to queue to the left of me. Bruce Carney, Shawnee Kleinhouse, Celia Paymer, Dashiel Leeds, and then we'll move on to virtual. So first is Bruce.
... tonight. In my 17th year of environmental advocacy in the city of Mountain View, I'm very proud of what the state of California, the Bay Area, Silicon Valley Clean Energy's territory, and the city of Mountain View have done over that span of years. And I am so sorry that the legislature has put cities in a position where they have to act so rapidly to save six years of environmental progress, but you are doing what needed to be done. So thank you, staff, thank you, council, for rising to this emergency. I had other remarks I wanted to make, but I want to shift focus to respond to John McAllister's question about how does this affect lower-income Mountain View residents? There's a program called Full Service Home Upgrade offered by Silicon Valley Clean Energy. It's available to lower-income people and middle-income people and high-income people. I recently was one of the first to go through the Full Service Home Upgrade, in which Silicon Valley Clean Energy found the contractor, supervised their work, and provided a low, low-fixed guaranteed fee to me. And I thought that was fantastic, but there's an even more fantastic option for those who are low-income and have less than half a million dollars of investable assets. For those homeowners, they can get free heat pump water heaters and free heat pump HVAC systems and free induction cooktops, induction stoves, all through Silicon Valley Clean Energy. They just have to apply and qualify. And I don't know why the phone isn't ringing off the hook at SVC, because you're not going to get a larger free deal in the Trump administration, so you better take what you can get now in the last year out from the Biden administration. Really, time for electrification is now. I'm sure that Trump is going to try to make it even harder to do solar, to put in offshore wind or onshore wind. So I hope that the city council members will reach out to their constituents and tell them about the Full Service Home Upgrade program from Silicon Valley Clean Energy.
Shawnee Kleinhouse?
Thank you so much, Shawnee Kleinhouse with the Santa Clara Valley Bird Alliance. Together with the Sierra Club, we sent you a letter with recommendations for some changes to the Bird Safe Design section. So I want to say first, thank you all for your leadership, and thank staff for looking at it promptly. We try to keep it to comments that are really about protecting birds, but not big enough so you'll have to do public outreach or really re-finding that are not there, because these are pretty simple. I don't know if you got the handout that I gave you, but our letter is there. And in conversation with some of you, I've seen requests for support. So you'll see there's a table that shows you what other cities are doing, as some of them, this is all we could do in just a very short time, but also, Mountain View itself in the North Bay Shore Precise Plan has very strong requirements. And for example, for passageways, the North Bay Shore Precise Plan does not even allow passageways that are made out of glass, never mind saying it'll have to retrofit it and use treatment, just says, don't do it, which is because it's so deadly to birds. There is a request to not allow internal film, so I included a little bit of science that shows that they're not effective. So we tried to give you enough information so you can adopt our recommendations. I would ask you to include them as they are, not change, like, I know San Jose looks at 30 feet, so we put that as a comparison, but please accept our recommendations as they are. And I really want to thank you again for the leadership on this. One last thing is about the lighting. The city was expected to do a dark sky ordinance, and I don't know where it's at, we haven't heard, so hopefully, we can help and reach out to us. Also, if there's any need for additional findings, we can provide you with information that you may need to, if you need to change anything, just reach out to us. Thank you.
Thank you. So I don't see Celia in the audience, so I'll move to Dashiel Leeds.
Hello, my name is Dashiel Leeds. I'm the Conservation Coordinator for the Sierra Club Lumber Pre-Edit Chapter. First, thank you so much for moving swiftly on this ordinance, preparing it to be ready for adoption before the AB 130 cutoff, and I really appreciate the response by both council and staff to respond quickly to questions that we had for improvements on Bird Safe Design. We hope you can incorporate them tonight into your motion and proceed with the first reading to get that code in before the AB 130 cutoff. I'm just going to list the overall changes that we had to A 5.107, that's the bird-friendly design code. Like, first was to remove the interior applied film as a compliance pathway. As Shawnee discussed, the interior applied film is much less effective than exterior film. Two, to remove netting as a compliance pathway. And then three, to add to the list of special conditions, these are features, sometimes called hazardous features, that would trigger bird-friendly requirements, given that the ordinance would already be applicable to them. So adding to this list of conditions, parallel panes of glass, such as glass passageways, atria open and enclosed, glazing adjacent to courtyards, three floors of glazing adjacent to any green roof or partial green roof, and standalone auxiliary structures or freestanding glass, plexiglass, or other clear, transparent, or highly reflective freestanding structures. I just want to circle back really quickly to the AC to heat pump. We think that this code provision is really excellent and worthy of adoption as well. The absolute best time to install a heat pump is when you're replacing your air conditioner. When you're replacing your air conditioner, you're replacing your air conditioner. When you get a heat pump, not only do you have the space cooling benefits, but you can operate that in reverse, so you also basically have a gas space heater as well, which for residents means that if their gas space heater dies later on, they won't have to replace that appliance, because they already have the electric appliance in place. And regarding some of the resiliency concerns that you mentioned, a lot of gas appliances, I think most now new appliances, even the gas ones, have electric starters. So you actually won't see any resiliency benefit for newly installed gas appliances. So it's actually better to future-proof Mountain View by going electric. And in terms of the grid impacts, you know, this sort of gradual home electrification is really just a drop in the ocean compared to some of the larger movements that are happening right now. So thank you so much for your time and consideration. We hope you move swiftly with the code tonight.
Great, thank you. Mary Daddio?
Good evening. I wanted to thank staff and city council for accelerating this, considering the electrification in the building codes, because I know there wasn't a lot of time, and it's not a simple, not a simple, not super simple, it takes a lot of work. And so, thank you for considering this, and I do ask that you please approve the proposed changes to encourage electrification. To meet our own climate goals, we need to stop burning fossil fuels. And, you know, requesting people to install a heat pump instead of AC seems like a really easy ask, so please, please approve the changes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other in-person? Okay, moving to virtual, we have John S.
Hi there. I'm John Scarborough. I'm a resident of Mountain View, and I'd like to thank you for moving so quickly to get all these changes in place. I hope the CEC and CBSC move as quickly. The changes for electrification are great. I like that they will help us get our housing stock more modernized and help give us more resilience down the line when we start having more expensive natural gas. So I think we're doing our part to help our communities and, you know, the world be a more habitable place and be ready for the future. So thank you very much for considering this, and I urge you to pass it quickly. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Our next virtual speaker is Bruce Nagel.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, first, I want to thank the team coming together and working through this on short timeframes in order to get these provisions in place. You were handed a short stick, but you charged ahead gracefully in terms of moving it forward. But a lot of good topics about what's in this, one of the things that we've not mentioned as much is the fact that moving to getting rid of natural gas and burning it is a health benefit. And I think we need to keep that in mind, because the more gas we put and burn, put into the atmosphere, the more likelihood there are for all kinds of nasty things that happen to the respiratory tract of people. There are documented things in regards to the things that happen to people with asthma, you know, and a number of no-people that have asthma, and it's not an easy disease to live with. So I want to thank you for that, and thank you for all the efforts of putting it together to move this forward. And, you know, I think you've had a number of good provisions from other people on this thing, so by all means, take the whole package. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, I saw it's cleared. So, oh, David's here in person. Okay. Hi, David. Yes, you can do your blue card after. I was like, I swear, it was virtual, and now I don't see it anymore. Okay.
Yeah, I thought that Alex was going to comment, and I had an extra moment for that, but apparently not. Hi, I'm back to talk about single-stair apartments. The existing code changes you're working on seem nice. Please continue. You know, that's good, electrification is good. But, single-stair apartments, one protected exit stair per floor with a shorter front door to stair distances. I want to request, we agendize a future item to consider case-by-case path for single-stair development under CBC 104.11. The idea is to extend Mountain View's existing alternative materials and methods program so that case-by-case, single-stair proposals can be considered. CBC 104.11 allows, is a state law, it allows approval when the design complies with the intent and provisions of the code and is not less than the equivalent in safety. So the idea is that projects would trade the, they would not have the second stair, and in return, they would provide improved sprinklers, pressurized stairways, caps on units per floor. I don't have specifics I want to suggest here, just, I'm asking, studying this in the future. We have an existing alternative methods system, and this would be, I'm proposing an extension for it, for case-by-case approval when the single-stair design is safer than what would be available with the dual stair, or what we currently allow with dual stair. Anyway, this stays within what's allowed by the state code, and it would be safer than the long double corridor buildings, double corridor apartments that we're getting. They're big, they're blocky. I know a lot of people don't like how the really, really wide buildings we get from dual staircase requirements look, and this is a, this is a solution to that. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. I see a one last virtual public comment from Alex Brown.
Oh, hi, friends. Hi, David. Just wanted to say hi, because you expected me to talk. Also, I like birds and electrification and stairs. Bye.
All right, that concludes public comments, so we'll move forward with council deliberation and action. And note that a motion to approve the recommendation should also include reading the title of the ordinances attached to the report. Councilmember Shaw Walter.
Thank you. I'm trying to push the move, and it's not working.
Oh, the motion.
Yeah, the motion.
I think there's, I think while the clerk works on that, perhaps maybe you can...
Yeah, well, I would just like to make a few comments, and that is really to echo what has been said before by other people. The staff has really taken a sort of a Herculean effort to get this done so quickly. When this came up last year and we realized it was going to happen, the city manager's office and, and the planning office just jumped into action. And we are so grateful that you did that. It's exactly what needed to be done, and, but usually, it's, you know, I mean, usually it isn't required, but it was very important this time, and so I really am very grateful that this happened. And you've put together an extremely comprehensive building code update, which is very important for the safety of Mountain View. I think one of the things that it's always important to remember, one of the jobs that cities do, is we, we are the keepers of, in a sense, of building safety. We can't really control what people charge to buy a structure, but we can make sure that it's built safely. And it's just really the most fundamental form of requirement of government. And as time goes on, and we know of all these changes that are happening in, with our climate, it's very important for us to do what we can do to reduce our greenhouse gases and at the same time, make our buildings supply much safer. So thank you very much for that. So with that, I will, I'll have to ask for some help for the bird safety, but I'd like to introduce an ordinance of the city of Mountain View amending the Mountain View City Code to delete Chapter 8, Article 8, Flood Plane Management in its entirety, and adopt a new Chapter 48, Flood Plane Management, and finding that the amendments are exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act, to be read in title only, further reading waived, and set a second reading for September 9, 2025. Introduce an ordinance of the city of Mountain View adopting the 2024 International Property Maintenance Code with local amendments, amending the Mountain View City Code to delete Chapter 8, Article 5, 2021 International Property Maintenance Code in its entirety, and adopt a new Article 6, Property Maintenance Code, and Chapter 25, Neighborhood Preservation, to locate with other similar city regulations, and finding that the amendments are exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act, to be read in title only, further reading waived, and set a second reading for September 9, 2025. Introduce an ordinance of the city of Mountain View amending Chapter 24, Hazardous Materials of the Mountain View City Code, to streamline content and make other clarifying amendments, and finding that the amendments are exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act, to be read in title only, further reading waived, and set a second reading for September 9, 2025. Introduce an ordinance of the city of Mountain View repealing the local amendments to the 2022 California Building Standards Code, adopting local amendments to the 2025 California Building Standards Code, including the 2025 California Energy Code. Three, amending Chapter 8, Buildings, and Chapter 14, Fire Prevention, of the Mountain View City Code to comply with changes to state law. Four, adopting findings to support the local amendments. And five, finding this ordinance is exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act, to be read in title only, further reading waived, and set a second reading for September 9, 2025. And I would also like to add the bird amendments as suggested by, in the letter from the Sierra Club and the Silicon Valley Bird Alliance.
Okay, that is adequate.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Shaw Walter, councilmember Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to second the motion. First, thank you, Councilmember Shaw Walter, for including the Bird Safe Design amendments that were shared by the community. I want to express my gratitude to staff for working expeditiously to advance these amendments. I know you are working under a very truncated timeframe. It's a good reminder, an example that the city can work with haste and alacrity when we have to address an issue with urgency, as was the case here. I'm grateful to members of the community who came forward and shared their support for the amendments, and I'm grateful for all of my colleagues. I think I'm expecting that we'll be supporting these unanimously. I did want to ask for a friendly amendment, a very light-touch thing. If we could ask staff to provide council some information about the status of the single-stair reform efforts at the state level and opportunities that may exist locally to implement changes where it makes sense and is safe.
I'm a little confused about, would that be at a future date? That's not to be included in this...
It's not a council meeting. It's maybe an email to council, or maybe our intergovernmental relations team can just give the council a status update. I know there's been some legislation and studies done at the state level, and it would be, I think, helpful to understand what the status is and if there are opportunities for the city of Mountain View to benefit from that work.
Well, I think that's a great idea, but I'm not sure that it needs to be included formally in the motion. I would ask staff, is it better to have it in the motion, or is it better to have it just as a direction for staff?
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be part of the motion for introduction of the ordinances, but I think that it can just be something that council could all agree on if you're making a request, but I don't think it needs to be part of the motion. Kind of like an Item 8 request. You can treat it like an Item 8 request.
Is that acceptable to you?
Does that mean we're doing it?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Ramos.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take the time to thank staff for moving expeditiously on this. I know that it was a really tight deadline, and, and we are really, really having to adjust in order to make this happen in time for that deadline. And with that in mind, I'm super appreciative of the willingness to work with, to incorporate the community feedback that we got in such a time, a tight timeframe, because our community are, they're our partners in policymaking, and, and it's kind of the point of having an open meeting where we do have this discussion. And, and so, once again, I appreciate your flexibility in including all these amendments, particularly the bird amendments. I wish there was a better way of calling them than just the bird amendments, but, but as we move toward a climate resilient future, thank you so much for your work on this, and I hope Mountain View continues to lead.
Councilmember Hicks.
So I will start by also commending staff on the amazing speed that you worked on this. I don't need to say it in more detail, because, because everyone else has. And I just wanted to also, I'm going to support the motion, the tweaks to the motion, and also, however it gets done, the stair legislation update. I just wanted to use this opportunity to have a little dialogue on the important question that Councilmember McAllister brought up, and say, the way I, I mean, I think asking how this impacts lower-income seniors, et cetera, is an important question. And I just want to say that when, I have a home that's over 100 years old, and when we redid the electricity, building code required that we put in a lot of outlets that we thought were completely unnecessary. And we told them, "We don't want all those outlets." And they said, "You're not doing it for yourself now, you're doing it for future residents, who may, you know, smart homes, et cetera, may have more appliances than you do." So we put it in for future residents, we haven't used those outlets yet, but, but, you know, we also refinanced our home. I know very, I am a senior also now, I was not then, but I know very few seniors who can't, who don't have money to pull out of their home. We didn't see the impact of the additional outlets at all, we never think about it, and it's prepared, our house is prepared for the future. So I just want to say that what we're doing here is not atypical. It's something that is, doing things, the way we use homes constantly changes, requiring that they be updated for the future is pretty typical. And all that said, I see it as preparing for, there's another price point that we need to look at, which is the rising cost of our home insurance. And if we don't address the climate crisis, that's the cost that I, that I really worry about. So with that said, I will be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Councilmember McAllister?
Yeah, I have a question for Silicon Valley Clean Energy, and then a quick comment. Are your rebates or the dollar contributions, is that a limited time, or is that something that you're going to, is it a limited-time offer?
Not currently. So we just got an additional $4 million from our board this August. Our program is a total of 14 million. We've paid out 7 million across our service territory, so there's 7 million more to go. And we intend to continue programs in some form or shape to support residents as we go through this transition from gas to electric. The rebate program is just one example. Mr. Carney previously also referenced a newer program that we have, which, through which we actually send a contractor to your home and make the upgrade for you, so you don't even have to worry about the rebates or finding a contractor.
Now, is that program continuous, going to be a permanent program?
Currently, it's funded through 2027.
Okay, thank you. But I'd still like you to look at batteries, because with the use of, with the advice and counsel of Bruce Carney, we put in solar, and we would love to have a battery that we can store that energy and get the grid working. So hopefully somewhere down the line, you'll have a rebate, and I'll be knocking.
Thank you.
And then, could you pull up Slide 9? It's the pie chart? Okay, I appreciate everybody coming out and advocating for the code and bringing everything up to date, and I agree, if you're remodeling, yes, it's a great time. I'm remodeling a project in Carson City, and we're taking out... in Carson City, and we're taking out all the galvanized plumbing and putting in all-new stuff. So, it absolutely makes great sense. But I would still like to see some of the passion that, look at the blue, transportation. And this is my sidekick to saying, you're worrying about this, but when it comes to transportation, I don't see the enthusiasm, the need for, to get this resolved quickly. And that's why we haven't, we've been working on a multimodal program for the City of Mountain View. And there is 58%. If we can get people out of their cars, or give them options to get out of their cars, we need to help that. And I know Mary's on board on this. And so, please, it's something that really deserves your attention. It's something that can be taken care of fairly easily. And so, please, focus, get the energy, get the people behind it, and let's try to reduce transportation, because that's your number one. No, I mean, increase transportation options, but reduce the dependence on it. So, that's your largest, thank you. And I will support the motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark, I see you in the queue again.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo the thing. It seems like just yesterday, it seems like yesterday, we were, the Sustainability Committee was meeting on this. And you, this is a Herculean effort, as Councilmember Shaw Walter said, to do this over the summer. So, really appreciate the, the time and effort that went into it. I just had, not part of the motion, just, just one. I think the, we'll do the second reading, adopt everything if everything goes well. But there's a third step, which is the acceptance by the CBSC and/or the, the California Energy Commission, which I, I assume will happen. I don't know how many other cities are doing this and what their backlog will be, but maybe in our weekly update or whatever, if and when that happens, just let us know, just so we can kind of put it to bed and feel a little better about it. Because there's, there's just that one last step where you just never know what will happen. So, really appreciate that. And I think, I don't see Shawnee, but in case you're listening, I really, one, I know not everyone appreciates science these days, but I really did appreciate the science behind the, the glazing on the interior versus exterior. And then the, the table that you put together really quickly with the other cities really helped too. So, thank you, everyone.
Great, thank you. All right, so, want to echo thanks to staff. I hear a couple things that could be some follow-up items. I think the only thing that I'd like to elevate is appreciative of the necessary steps that the city's taking, but also coupling that with the education and outreach component, to make sure that all of those who I would just maybe categorize as like vulnerable populations, whether they're, they're seniors or because of their financial background, are making sure they know that their resources are available. I think that that is really critical. And it's great to know that the SVCE funding is not time-limited. So, all the more reason to be able to promote that and excited about what our Sustainability Office is going to be doing. And I think that that's also a great way for us to be promoting it in our civic leadership academies, and letting them know that that exists. So, sounds like we, we have the motion with the three items, and then fifth is to include, I'll just call it like the bird, safe bird design elements that came forward to council. And then also, kind of close, what I'd call closing the loop, as, as Councilmember Clark mentioned, in terms of getting that, you know, final adoption, that we made it before the, that bill. And then, I was asking Councilmember Ramirez, the single stair bill is AB 835, State Fire Marshal Building Standards, Single Exit, Single Stairway Apartment Houses Report. And so, maybe what we can ask is, we have, you know, our, our state lobbying groups, and we have our lobbying portfolio. And so, maybe we can just ask for a status update if we're watching it, that bill, and we can, we can envelope it into our, our portfolio of bills that we're monitoring. Does that sound fine for colleagues? All right. So, that's everything that this motion is going to include. Let's vote. All right, and that passes unanimously. Thank you again to, to staff and our community for rallying behind this. So, we'll move to Item 5, which is our closed session announcement. City Attorney Loog will make a closed session announcement, and then we welcome public comment on the items listed for closed session.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. This is City Attorney Jennifer Loog. There are two items on this evening's closed session agenda. Item 6.1 is a conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation under Government Code Section 54956.9. The name of the case is San Francisco Bay Keeper versus City of Mountain View and City of Sunnyvale, United States District Court of the Northern District of California, Case Number 20CV00824. And the second item, Item 6.2, is public employee performance evaluations pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 for the city attorney, city clerk, and city manager. And there will be no final reportable action taken in closed session this evening, so there will be no report out after closed session.
Great, thank you. Would any member of the public joining us virtually or in person like to provide comment on the closed session items listed on tonight's agenda? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom, or submit a speaker card to the city clerk. We'll take in-person speakers first. Do not see any. And I do not see any virtual hands raised. So, I will close public comment. And we'll move on to Item 6, our closed session. The council will now recess to the Plaza Conference Room for closed session, and will not return to open session for adjournment. And we will close the public session at 6:34.